Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Christian? Mr. Blavinger?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Here.
Ms. Betro Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Unical?
Here.
Ms. Hughes?
Okay, we have a quorum. First item on the agenda is going to be the consent agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to have removed from the consent agenda? There's a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
It's removed.
Thank you, Barbara. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Janet. Can we please have a roll call?
Mr. Blavinger?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Betro Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is to swear in. Namesh? Welcome, family.
Hi.
So if you wouldn't mind, just stand up for us. You don't have to raise your right hand unless you want to. Just repeat after me.
All right.
I, Namesh Patel.
I, Namesh Patel.
Having been appointed to the office of library trustee.
Having been appointed to the office of library trustee.
In the village of Northbrook.
In the village of Northbrook.
In the county of Cook.
In the county of Cook.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of library trustee.
The duties of the office of library trustee.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, you're now a trustee.
Thank you.
That's the excitement.
Carry on. We can leave and talk.
That's fair.
The next item is public comment, so as the public who are present, if you would like to make any statements in support of your husband or father?
You know, I would. I love this library. In fact, when we were looking for places to live and just driving up Cherry Street, looking at potential houses years and years ago, this building in and of itself was just a big attraction. And then once we got to know the insides more, not just your resources, but the programming and how it just brings people in the community together, I just fell more and more in love with it. And we really utilize so much that the library has to offer, and I know that there are more. So thank you for making our town just even better.
Thank you for the compliment.
It's a great facility.
Thanks for donating your husband's time.
We should note that Ms. Patel is also a commissioner, the Village Community Commission.
Yeah, we just had to be.
Just came from that meeting.
Yeah. Across the parking lot. Do you boys have anything to say? Can I be part of your tour? You're a little embarrassed.
That's fair. We get it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that's all the public comments, it looks like. The next item on the agenda is going to be an auditorium rentals presentation by Ariel.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ariel Raybuck. I'm the evidence production manager here at the library. And in support of the library's mission, speaking of which, to provide an environment where community members can come together, I am seeking to open the auditorium for rentals. And that would be for a fee in 2024. With this, we are hoping to ensure at, like, the most affordable costs to the renter. So we want to do everything at cost. We want to keep on knowledgeable staff, including me, and we want to provide really good service to the potential renters. What we're looking at is mostly people who are probably going to be seeking a space that's slightly better than this multipurpose room for recitals, potential concerts from local musicians, and possibly even local companies or organizations who might want to come in and hold a ceremony or staff training or something like that. So we have been getting calls from the community for this. Oftentimes, our own performers come through the space and they say, "Oh, man, do you rent this space out?" And we have to say no to them. We also get frequent emails from people who are like, "Oh, can I rent this space?" We're just like, "No, the infrastructure isn't there." But I'm hoping that we can make some changes in our meeting room policy and our overall library policy in order to make this happen. So just some background on me, I come from the theater community, tech theater. I have worked at a big 1,200-seat auditorium where we did rentals. I've worked as a stage manager. I've operated light and sound boards, much more complex technology than we have in the auditorium space right now. But with that, I know how to talk to potential renters to determine what their needs are, to see if the space is what they need for what they're seeking to do with their event. I'm also a great problem solver and great at communicating with renters to determine what they need. I also have really great connections in the field, so if we have any questions about opening this space up, I have a connection at Dominican University with someone who's a production manager there. I have also been in contact with the Buffalo Park District, Buffalo Grove Park District, and the Northbrook Theater, and I've talked to them about how they operate their space. So I know plenty of people. And with that, our next steps are looking like we are going to develop a strong procedure in advance of making this available to patrons. We've already started that process. I've already, like I said, talked to the Buffalo Grove Park District, talked to plenty of other people, done a lot of field research on comparable costs in the area and what their renters are, or what the renters are willing to pay. And also, we are going to be consulting with the library lawyer to solidify a strong rental contract. So with that, I will open the floor up to comment or questions.
So I'll start, if you don't mind. The reason, just kind of as background, because I'm the oldest now on the board, the reason we didn't open up the new auditorium, or there were a couple of reasons when it was renovated, two primary ones were, one, we wanted to make sure staff had first opportunity and first access to use it. And then the second was, once we redid it and it was brand new, there was a desire to make sure we kept it in good condition and, you know, trying to avoid some of the issues that were with the old auditorium. But I think the time now, you know, assuming that there's not a issue with availability for the staff is good for opening up a little bit more to the community. It does serve a nice, you know, function, has great seating. You have multipurpose use, similar to what this room is, but, you know, with the fixed seating. So I'm certainly not against the concept. I just want to be confident that whatever policies we put in place, the staff still have the first opportunity to use the space so that, to the extent that there's programming they want to do that needs that space, it's available.
Yes, absolutely. And our current plan is that we would not open it up to the public, to reserve a day until two months before. So definitely librarians will have first shot.
And we're going to start with Northbrook Library card holders only.
That's true.
My question was going to be, would there be a differential in the charges between residents and non-residents?
Yeah, so for the first year, it's going to be residents, available to residents only.
Oh, I see, okay.
So that could be if there's someone in your group who has a card, potentially that you would be able to book the space, you know, maybe the lead person on the group might not be a Northbrook resident, but maybe they have, like, a teacher in the music school who is, we could book it through their card. But definitely someone in the group has to be a Northbrook resident for at least the first year, and then we'll see how things go from there.
And be willing to be then responsible for it, much like our meeting room policy, where you're, yes, we're using your card and you're agreeing to be held responsible for any damage or issues. And just as a, because Jay is now the oldest member on the board in terms of tenure, it's certainly been a lot of years. 2015 was when we did the renovation, so it finished in, like, March 2015, so it has been eight years, almost.
Yeah, it's hard to believe.
Oh, eight and a half. So, yeah. And unlike Park District's libraries too, like, our goal is to allow people to use our space without charging because we feel that people have already been charged through their taxes. So this is really kind of unique in how we handle the other spaces. So Ariel has done a tremendous amount of research because we do know that we will need to have, like, with the meeting rooms, we unlock the door, people come in, we, you know, say, "Okay, have fun." And with this, it will require more staff, hands-on, being in the space, helping them with setups, doing lighting, possibly sound stuff. So the cost is mostly to just break even on those so that we're not putting in added, we're not having to increase any of our budget lines in terms of being able to rent out the space. So it's more of a cost recovery model that we would be looking at.
It's a great idea. It's kind of like, oh, we've been sitting with this resource and it's such a lovely space and it isn't available. It's, I think that's great. Good presentation.
So you're in, Namesh, any feedback?
I have just one question. Are there potential parameters around it? Like, I'm just curious, you mentioned, like, recitals, that sounds great. What if someone's trying to do, like, a fundraiser or something and bringing in these large volumes of people for...
Right, yeah. So like, the plan right now is to keep to our current meeting room policy when it comes to, like, solicitation and stuff like that. So if it's in line with those policies, then yes, but if not, then no.
Yeah, and we do not allow any solicitation, so that includes fundraisers.
Used to be they had, what was the speakers that would come in? The ones who did the...
Toastmasters.
Toastmasters would use the auditorium. There might be some private recitals for, like, some of the teachers that do piano.
Yeah, we do, we do charge a nominal fee currently for use of the piano because of the piano tuning, so when people rent it.
I think this is great. I've been asked about it by members of the community, and I think there's definitely a need and interest. And it would also be interesting to see if that expands people's use of the library and ticks up library card users too, because now there's an additional incentive to get the card. So I'm looking forward to seeing your proposal.
Yeah, I definitely think it'll bring new people into the library for space usage. And also, talking to Northbrook Theater and also Buffalo Grove Park District, they are completely booked all of the time, have to say no to people. There are people seeking a space like this.
Are there, before we release Ariel back out into the world, in, this was meant to be an introduction, is there anything that the board would like to see, knowing that we'll be coming back in January with some recommendations in order to make sure we have all the information that you would be interested in? And you don't have to answer right now, you can also let Kelly or Ariel know.
I would just really like to know if there are any costs involved above and beyond the staffing.
Sure, okay.
If yours...
Yeah, like cleaning costs and others.
Exactly.
And then will we be allowing the projection room to be used?
Sorry, what was the question?
Is the projection room. I mean, we're planning to have staff run everything, so it wouldn't be like opening it up and being like, "Yes, press this button here."
I know, but if someone came in and said, "Oh, you know, we have some film we put together, we want to show, you know, some student who did a documentary," or something like that, would they be allowed to be able to use?
Oh, yeah. Things would definitely be allowed to.
We would have staff. One of the reasons we have to charge a fee is because we would have staff here to run the tech. We wouldn't have the renters running any kind of light or sound.
Like a third party.
So we're going to hire third-party contractors to come in and help with that. So we're not adding staff to our roster, but there are companies that we can bring in, and then Ariel will coordinate all of that. But any kind of light, sound, using the projector would have...
Experts will be operating the technology, but if someone wanted to do something with the technology, we would have someone always on hand who knows how to use it, who can help them accomplish their goal.
So like, cleaning and that kind of stuff, that's all part of our regular maintenance contract with the cleaning company, but it would be these third-party people where there would be additional costs.
And then I would assume we're not going to allow food in it still?
No, that's correct.
No crusts of bread, though.
Our staff, if there was going to be large crowds, would our staff be the ones kind of monitoring and doing the...
Crowd control?
Well, not just crowd controlling, I mean, there are times where you have people lining up outside to get into the auditorium and you have staff kind of assisting with that process.
So when it comes to the situations like at other rental facilities, the person who is the renter is required to bring ushers and manage their, the people who they bring in. So whatever it is, they'll be told that they need to manage the crowds on their own. But they'll be given the tools to do so.
And not unlike the meeting room policy, we have pretty stiff fines in there, not because we want to charge people for them, but because we want people to follow the rules. So setting the fees at a rate that people will be like, "Oh, okay, no, I need to bring in the ushers, okay."
Right.
So that they don't, because we don't want to charge them, because we don't want to have to deal with it, we want them to do it, so.
This isn't, this isn't going to be, I think, a cost that most, like, someone who, for example, made a, put together a YouTube video in their home or something and wanted to screen it could, you know, afford. It'll be more costly than that.
Anything else?
Just seeing the proposal.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item is staff report, Ms. Kate Hall.
Yeah, so a couple things. One, I am going to be off from November 23rd to December 4th, so Kelly will be in charge in my absence. And I'm not going to say anything that will cause us to have to knock on wood. I also wanted to mention that Mr. Lynch, who was here previously this spring, I just wanted to make all of the board members aware that we had, due to his behavior, he had been banned for six months. His ban is up as of next week, and so we do not anticipate there being any issues, but he has, he has called and asked some questions. He's been behaving and not violating any codes of conduct, and he is welcome to come back after his ban is up, as long as he continues to follow the guidelines. But I wanted to make you all aware that that is coming up. I also wanted to mention that we just received word, ILA is switching up their legislative meetups this year. Usually, it's on President's Day, and this year, they're doing them in December. And so the annual legislative meetup is happening on December 5th. It was not in the report, because I had not gotten the official word yet from ILA, but it is a chance, we invite all of our local legislators. Northbrook has, we're at an interesting cross-section, so we have, it feels like all the legislators. We have, of course, our state senators, you know, Senator Duckworth and Senator Durbin, as well as our representatives. Representative Schneider covers most of us, but also Representative Jan Schakowsky also covers a portion of Northbrook, as well as our state reps, which include Representatives Bob Morgan, Jonathan Carroll. Laura Fine and Julie Morrison are the senators. I am forgetting Jennifer Gon Gershewitz because she also is covered in Northbrook, and there's someone that I am forgetting and I'm going to feel really guilty about. There's a fourth rep, and I can't remember who it is right now. But they are all invited, and it's a chance to talk. We have ILA talk about the legislative issues that are impacting libraries, and we get a breakfast. And then it also is a chance for the legislators to talk with trustees, staff members, Kelly and Anna, and I will be attending. It is actually here in Northbrook this year at the Hilton. And so if you are interested in attending December 5th, and I'll send an email out tomorrow with all the details, from 8:30 to 10, please let me know and we'll get you registered. But it is a great opportunity to learn a little bit more about what is impacting libraries. There's probably going to be a fair amount about intellectual freedom talked about. I also wanted to mention something that was in my report, which was that the Cultural Society has partnered with us to do a Korean-American photography exhibit, which will be presented Saturday, December 2nd, from 2:00 to 4:00. And there's an opening reception here in Pollock. It will be open then for the entire month of December. I am not physically in the country back yet, but Kelly will be here, and I'm, and I believe, Janet, you also said that you are going to be able to attend, which is wonderful. If any other trustees are able to attend, it would be wonderful to have you here to show support for this partnership. And I saw a few of the photographs, because I saw a promo of the exhibit book, and they're really wonderful. So just from a pure enjoyment standpoint, it, I think is going to be a really wonderful event. And then I was not here yesterday, but Anna was, and I know has gotten a lot of feedback from staff on...
Yeah, they love the ice cream.
Delicious ice cream.
Yeah. They keep asking people what they're taking, everybody's taking different stuff. They're loving the hot fudge and the caramel and the maraschino cherries.
That's mostly...
So, yeah, no, everybody is very thankful and is loving it, so thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you both.
Yeah, and Barbara, thank you for calling Graders, getting the info, getting that all set and...
It's very hard work.
Yeah.
Stacy was my co-conspirator yesterday morning, and that, we did good.
I put some whipped cream away. That was about the extent.
Hey, that's important stuff. And you put the video together, which was delightful. So thank you all.
Good teamwork.
Yes. And I don't have anything else, but I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has from anything else in my report.
Can I just make one update to your report?
Yes.
On the steam boiler, the gas smell. So I had the manufacturer of the steam boiler come out this morning and really kind of do a thorough check of all of the connections, and they did that, and they could not find a gas leak. So to Kate's point, we really don't know where it's coming from, but I just wanted to have them come out and kind of check everything thoroughly. They looked at the gas regulator, all of the connections, the piping, so they feel pretty confident that it's not the steam.
Any other questions for Kate? My next item is board member reports. I'll start. Thank you, Barbara and Stacy, for everything you did yesterday. Barbara, thank you for arranging it. Stacy, thank you for taking care of the video. That was all I was going to say. So, Namesh is the newest board member. Is there anything you would like to say for your first meeting?
John Spatterman.
Well, just going back to being a new member of the board, I want to thank everybody. It's been great getting to meet the fellow board members, and I'm sure I'll get to know you better. And thanks, Anna and Kate, for the initial orientation. I do appreciate that. I have a lot to learn, but you folks seem to be doing a great job. And then I echo my wife's comments, you know, we love the library and it's a privilege to come here to support this group. Looking forward to it.
Right. It was nice to have your family here, so be sure to thank them for us.
I'll just report, I stopped by the repair day here in this room. I had never, I knew the library had done, but I...
Did you bring something to repair?
I did not. I didn't have anything to repair, but I just wanted to check it out. It was lots of people. I mean, just lots of people, and I chatted at length with Megan and Michelle and Mike, who were all doing a great job, sort of managing the process. And I talked to a couple of the volunteer fixers, I guess. It looked, you know, it was just great. I was, it was great to see everybody here doing it. One of the volunteer fixers did ask me when the craft swap was coming back, and I really said, "Oh."
You didn't say never?
I did not.
You redirected to staff. Yeah, no. So the craft swap was something that we used to do every other year, and it was our, what is now our Climate Action Plan Committee, which was our Sustainability Committee that used to run it. And they decided, right before the pandemic started, actually, that they wanted to take a break in order to explore other ideas for doing sustainability programming. So we had put a pause on it, and as far as I'm aware, I'm looking at Kelly and Anna, who serve on CAP, I don't believe that it has come up again for discussion, unless I'm...
I would say more definitively it has been discussed and it's not coming back.
Oh, okay. Well, that is...
No, it works.
It is a lot of work.
It was a craft swap, so people could bring in their unused craft supplies. It included everything from materials, yarn. I saw stuff from, like, mini doll, bolts of fabric, painting supplies, drawing supplies, just anything craft-related. And then we would set it up, I mean, staff, I participated, I brought in fabric, because I have a little bit of an addiction. And then you could, you dropped off the stuff, staff would organize it, and then anyone that donated would get kind of first pick to go around and find something, and then anyone else could come. And then anything that was left over would be boxed up and donated. So it was an opportunity to reuse when you have, you know, small amounts of stuff. But it was a significant amount of work, and...
And I think what we found, really, from the sustainability standpoint, is that we were collecting more than people were taking with them, so it was less of a swap and more of a drop-off event. And then we were needing to figure out where those things were going next, so.
Yeah. I think if it was a yarn swap, that might have worked, because we did always have people very eager about the yarn, but that was only, like, one out of 20 tables.
Well, at any rate, the repair event was...
Which is wonderful, but that's good to...
Happy and lots of people were taking advantage of that opportunity.
Yeah. It's good to keep stuff out of the landfill.
Barbara or Stacy, anything you'd like to... Okay, we can move on to unfinished business. The first item is the strategic plan project update.
So we did hit 5.5% for our community survey, which was great. They typically expect 1% to 2%, so this was a great thing. And it comes right before the villages' survey, and three of the four school districts are also doing surveys, so our timing was impeccable. And we, I did not get an update from the consultant on the staff and board capacity survey, so I was hoping to have that number for tonight, but I did not. And we will be, they're working on tabulating now all of the data, and we'll be bringing that to the staff, the managers, specifically managers and assistant managers, in December. And then the board meeting on January 20th, on that Saturday, will be the chance for the board to have the presentation from the strategic plan consultants on all of the data that they have gathered, both from staff, board, community, the focus groups, the interviews. And then that will then give us our opportunity to, as they say in the proposal, to dream. So first it was the collection, and now this next part is the dreaming, and then we'll be turning to the last piece of it, which is the creation of the strategic plan and the implementation and creation of the action plan, so we can start doing the stuff that's in the plan. So we are chugging right along on schedule, which is great, and are very excited at the amount of data that we've been able to gather from the community.
Any questions for Kate? Okay, next item is the Lilly Zhang EDI project update.
And so we've been talking about this now for several months because we received the report from Lilly in October, and I did include an update in the packet. The main thing that I wanted to talk with the board about today was kind of twofold. One is as part of the Lilly Zhang project, and as we talked about when the board hired Lilly and also, fast forward libraries, is we will be merging the two groups into one for the strategic planning process. So we'll be taking the results from the EDI report and merging those in. So the staff that were involved in the EDI report are being moved into the strategic plan committee work. And so moving forward, I'm collapsing those two in terms of updates, because those will be combined. But there is other work that is still being... But there is other work that is still being done with the EDI report. And one of the big recommendations from Lilly was that we needed additional HR support. And so Kelly and Anna and Lori and I have been talking and in thinking about what the library needs, what is in the report, what we've identified as needs, we are going to be hiring an HR director. So Lori will remain in her current role as HR manager. It will be not unlike the role that Anna plays with our facilities manager, where he is in charge of the operational aspects, and Anna is in charge of the larger strategic priorities around the facility. The HR director would be responsible for the strategic development on the HR front. And then Lori would still pretty much be doing the same job she's doing now, which is the management of the benefits, you know, doing the onboarding, working with managers on the hiring process, and doing the day-to-day operational stuff. So with this new role, we also recognize the need to have someone who can be a lead in working. And Kelly and Anna and I will also be, of course, working with them on this. But to take the lead on implementing EDI strategy around HR, you know, that was very clear in the report, that this is something that we need to have better processes around. And so having someone who can be dedicated to doing that and to not relying on the EDI committee to be doing that work, we feel is really important. And so as part of this, I feel that we need someone who comes to us from outside the typical library world. I have happily, like, I happily stole Kelly from her last library and still pat myself on the back for that. But in thinking about what work I feel needs to happen, we really are ahead of many other libraries when it comes to our efforts around EDI and specifically around a lot of our HR processes. And so I want us to be able to cast a very wide net. And so to that end, I'm coming to the board, because I'd like to talk about hiring a search firm to do the search, which is not something that is typically done for libraries, except at the executive director level. I do not have any search firms to present to you today. I am merely bringing this as a topic to see what the board thinks of it. Because it typically, the costs typically run $20,000 to $40,000 to do a search for a director-level position. Again, I do not have any proposals. I've started putting together a list of companies. But I do not, I wanted to first see if this was something that the board, what the board felt. Because it would be something that the board would be voting on, since this wasn't included in the budget. And so is something that would come before the board in order to officially approve and hire someone. So that is kind of big picture. And I'm happy, I do not have all the details of how exactly all of this would work. But I wanted to introduce the topic and see what the board thought and see what questions you have that I can answer now and what questions you have that I can't, that I can work on getting answers to.
Okay, I'll make a couple of comments too. So when Kate and I talked on Monday about the meeting, I grilled her intensely on both the decision to add an HR director and then the process about going into finding that person and hiring that person. We talked a little bit about budgeting in terms of, you know, where the, how that would affect the budget, the decision to bring on this additional high-level individual. And Kate has assured me that we have space within the budget. This person will be at the level of the other director level, so of Kelly and Anna, in terms of compensation. Lori would be reporting to this person directly. And that's part of the reason why it makes a little bit of sense for there to be an outside firm involved in the hiring, because it seems a little odd to have Lori be the one who is the HR person now to kind of lead the search for the person she's reporting to. I don't know if that's typical, you would want to do that. And so to be able to have the outside experts who can reach beyond the library world and do a broader search within the greater, you know, community of HR executives seems to make sense. We do, I believe, have room within the budget to address that fee. But, you know, it isn't outside what we had planned on. Those were kind of the questions I was concerned about in terms of talking about it, and then how this person would fit in and, you know, role-wise, and whether or not there would be sufficient work long-term that this person would be busy. And Kate feels that there are a number of projects that have not been dealt with, because we just haven't had someone to be able to deal with them. And this person will be able to deal with those projects above and beyond just taking the strategy and EDI, trying to implement it. There are questions for Kate, please, by all means, griller.
I think it's a great idea. I think that human resources can, depending on how the job description is written, can really take on a much broader, even professional development in many ways and all of that. The question I ask is, why would you go outside of the library world? Because a not-for-profit is very different operating than big business and all that kind of, the skill set for a not-for-profit is pretty specific.
I think that when I talk about going outside of the library world, I'm thinking of it as casting a broad, like, most of the places that we list are very library-specific. But I think that someone that works in other municipal government would be interested in this. And that isn't, I mean, certainly, could we research and find those avenues and post there? And sure. But having a firm that focuses on municipal and not-for-profit, would, they would already have those, you know, awareness of those places. I do think that HR has become increasingly complicated. You know, SHRM, I was telling Jay when we talked on Monday, you know, SHRM, which is the Society for Human Resource Management, used to recommend one full-time equivalent HR person for every 100 employees. So we have 115 employees. And we, but now, but now SHRM is recommending at least one and a half, but two people for every 100, because the needs of HR have changed so drastically. So I think that the complexities that exist in HR today are such that I have not observed, we are one of, there are not a ton of libraries that have dedicated HR people. At my last library, I was HR. And let's just sit with that for a minute, because that's kind of terrifying. But that is the reality of most libraries. And so casting a wider net, when we know that the pool is very small and that I, and this is my, I mean, and I admit that, like, of course, I bring bias to this. I have not seen anyone that is like, "Oh, wow," in the library world, that I would want to steal and, or that I want to entice over to us. Because I think that we are asking for a very high level of performance, as we do with most of our employees. And we're looking for someone to come in with a deep well of knowledge, not necessarily about libraries, but about how to create a strong culture, how to implement some of the EDI initiatives that we know we want to take. And so I don't want us limiting our options. And so it isn't that we wouldn't consider someone from libraries, but I think it's really important to cast that larger net, because there are unique perspectives. And this is a position that, yes, we can teach them most of the HR stuff. Unlike Anna's position, where a lot of the finance stuff, if you come from outside municipal government, there's a steep learning curve. But with HR, it, there aren't really. It is really more, I would say, consistent across for-profit, not-for-profit, and governmental entities.
I'm reacting to the search firm. Forty to 60,000. I've been parts of search firms. And there are steps, aren't there, that you can take in the interim in terms of networking, in terms of professional organizations, not necessarily library-based, that, you know, are specifically geared towards human relations? And I know that's time-consuming, but 40 to 60,000 dollars.
Like 20 to 40. I know that's still a lot of money, just to be clear. I still, that's a lot.
And I think that it's a last step. I think putting out the word, whether it's in some kind of professional, if there are professional journals, or there are networks far and wide that have to do with human resources, not just in libraries. But I think maybe that is something I would rather try before investing that kind of money.
Any thoughts, Janet?
Worked with a lot of outside firms. And I can see the value in an outside firm handling this, given the nature of the position and having, not wanting the human resources manager to be hiring their supervisor. I will also say that having worked with a lot of executive recruitment firms, I am never impressed. And I generally feel that we could have done just as good a job internally. Now, that is not to say that there isn't somebody fantastic out there, but that has, that has been my experience. I guess I'm less concerned about the money as I am about, is it worth the money? And I have very rarely seen it be worth the money in my own limited, limited experience.
Nimesh, any thoughts? I know this is new, so.
Yeah. I think it's healthy to appreciate, you're right about the hire, and that's a comforting factor to have someone from the outside. At the same time, if you have good vision into what this role is, not just right now, you talked about EDI, but three years out as well, right? Because I think it's important, because there is a lot that's come from the outside world that I think could benefit. So I like your thinking of, maybe it's not a municipal or another library HR director from someplace else. Because right to my mind, I think I know a couple of people even. So it comes down to, like, there are people that are moving around in corporate America that have done these things, that have created cultures, that have looked at the EDI initiatives at companies. So I tend to think that there are some good people that are probably out there. But at the same time, I want to appreciate the sensitive nature of what you're trying to accomplish. And then if I could, just suggest, make sure you're not thinking about a few things that you need right now. It's really about kind of a three-year strategy with this person and how this evolves and, you know, this mental health and all the other things that are going on.
Yes. They're met, I have a list, but I didn't, I don't, you know. Yes, but agreed, yeah.
Stacy?
I mean, I've obviously, I have the benefit of having had since Monday to think about this. And I, I've had the same mixed bag of experiences with search firms. They're pretty common in higher education. I've seen them go incredibly well, and I've seen them go right off the rails. And it seems like there's never anything in the middle. I do think about the moment of time that we're in as a library, with the EDI feedback, the strategic plan, and rebuilding and repairing some relationships with the staff. And I think that interests me with the search firm to provide some objectivity in a way that running the search internally can't do. I think having somebody that admin can talk to about what they need, staff can talk to about what they need, and can synthesize all of this feedback that we've been collecting, makes a lot of sense. So I'm less concerned with the cost and more concerned with making sure that if we spend the money, we are choosing the right search firm for what we need at this moment in time.
I would agree. I mean, if you're going to spend the money. And I, again, I've seen the exact same thing. Or my middle has been just pretty mediocre. And somehow the staff ends up doing half the work anyway, which is what my experience has been. But it might be good to have that objectivity.
I think, you know, hearing what Stacy is saying and what, you know, Barbara and Jen and Nimesh, you're saying too, it can also, perhaps, there's like a, it doesn't have to be either off the rails or fabulous. I mean, hopefully it will be fabulous. But I'm thinking, like, I know I came and suggested we do a full search with an outside firm, but there's also an in-between where we could work with a search firm to synthesize all of that data and put it all together and be that sounding board. But then we would still be then conducting the search. So they would help with gathering that from staff, perhaps. I'm thinking out loud here. So like, this is very much off the cuff.
That sounds like another consultant to come in and just tell you what to do. As opposed to, I mean, the benefit of the search firm is they're doing the search. They're doing the initial screening. They're, you know, making the phone calls to see if, you know, the people that they have in their, you know, rolodex are interested in the position.
Pulling out a term like rolodex.
Yeah. I mean, my question really is, if you're going to go the search firm route, what is the process for finding the search firm? So that you can feel comfortable it is the right firm who can meet the needs, you know, do the synthesizing, but also who has, you know, kind of the experience within the library municipality, you know, universe to be able to know where to go to look and to try and access the avenues Barbara's talking about. You know, so are we talking about trying to do a bidding where we have a few firms coming in and making presentations so we can make a decision, like we've done with architects or?
That would be what I would, I was thinking. It would be me reaching out to firms, seeking proposals, bringing them to the board in January, either asking, depending on the volume of proposals, either, I know there is some concern among staff of like, oh, well, like, is this going to turn into a six-month process to find a consultant? And then I don't think it needs to be. So I think that there's a, you know, pulling proposals, looking at and saying, "Oh, well, this person is asking for 100,000. We're not going to entertain that." And having kind of some base criteria. And then the board could either decide, "We want to interview these people." Or, you know, Kelly and Anna, Lori and I can do an initial interview and invite some to the January board meeting. I think it could go either way. Or the board could look at them in January and say, "Okay, we'd like to, you know, interview these people." That would, of course, prolong the process a little bit. But again, I think that this is a really key position. And if we decide going forward with a search firm is the right decision, we don't want to just pick someone and be like, "Okay, well, we got them and let's go." Especially, you know, as I hear some of the concerns that everyone has brought up, that would be, I think that that could end up causing more damage. And so, so I could see it either of those ways. Either we do some pre-vetting, and after getting proposals, bring it to the board, do interviews in January, or the board reviews all the proposals, we invite people for interviews after the January board meeting, and the board decides.
I heard Nimesh say that he already knows a couple of people that might be qualified. We haven't done any of it. Have you done any of it? Have you sent any?
No. We have put together a job description. We have put together a list of key skills and experience that we would be seeking. We have not written a formal job ad. We have not put together any of that yet. Because if we were going to hire a search firm, having some of that pre-done makes sense. But doing the other work, then we're kind of just then doing the work. So, so no, we have not. And we also recognize there is, we need to involve the staff in this process. That is something that I feel very strongly about. I know Kelly and Anna and Lori do as well. Like, having a search firm, like, whether it's, we do focus groups, I don't think we want to do another survey, but we want them to be able to share their thoughts while the decision-making for the position ultimately will rest with me. We want staff to feel that they understand the process and that we have heard, you know, we know based on the report from Lilly what they want, but we want to give them an opportunity to share as well.
But as part of the report, they talked a lot about, staff talked a lot about being overdone with projects, plans, with proposals. And I think there are times when it's important to involve and have everybody buy in to the person and the position. And there are times in which it's not a good. It feels like it's the right thing to do. But this is a manager. This is somebody who doesn't necessarily have to be liked. They have to be really good at what they do. And- And I always talk about the difference between a manager and a leader. A manager is somebody who works for the benefit of the organization. A leader is somebody who works for the benefit of the people in the organization. And you want a leader like Anna and Kelly. And I don't think that it's necessary to have it be a popular vote, or I think there are times when input is essential, and you may want to have representatives at some point. But I think involving them full force in another series of.
That's not the idea. The idea here is that because of the relationship to the EDI and implementing some of these EDI initiatives, that the staff have somewhat of a place as to what it is we're looking for in order to implement the EDI, as opposed to having the staff be the ones making the decision. We don't, that's not something that keeps looking at having the staff do. It's just making sure that they have the opportunity to say, well, here's some of the things we're concerned about with EDI that we want this person to be able to deal with, and so that the staff has given input, has been heard, and now that's taken into consideration with the search.
I, okay. I, I defer to you and what you know about it, but I think that trying to be sensitive to the fact that they're over-asked and over-involved, and what is the real purpose? Because it's more than EDI, that job. It's going to encompass a lot of areas. So I, I just, I don't think this needs to be a process that's six months long and forty thousand dollars. I think it's, I think it's doable, and it's really a wonderful idea.
So are you comfortable that you have some directive, or are you kind of?
I, no directive. I, I don't feel that I have directive, but what I hear people saying is, what I feel like the group is saying is that hiring a search firm is not the route that the board...
Well, I don't know if I would go that far, because we're missing two voices today.
Okay.
And, you know, there are a couple of voices here saying yes, a couple of voices saying no. I think you have to look at it and say, okay, well, maybe we need to do a little more legwork to look into what are the options, and in January have additional discussion, because we're not deciding anything today. But to the extent that you're going to be doing the search and you're going to be looking to us in January, I think January need to have a full-fledged presentation to say, okay, here's what we found, here's who we think is appropriate, and, you know, we'll use the board to prove it at that point when we have more concrete information in front of us.
So are you saying presenting proposals from consultants? Because I, I do think that waiting till January to talk about whether or not to seek proposals...
No, I, I think you have to come to us with something concrete. If you don't have proposals, it's not going to be concrete, because saying twenty to forty, you know, is a range that it's going to be dependent, because you may go and talk to some of these search firms, and they may tell you, well, it's X percentage of the first year's salary, and the range for this position is, you know, this range, so you're looking at this dollar amount.
Right.
You know, because it's typically not tied to hours worked, it's typically tied to what you're bringing in.
Oh, right, yeah, right. And some charge a flat fee, but a lot do charge based, a percentage based on, so.
And from there, we may say, okay, well, these seem like good proposals, but we want to see or hear from the person before making a final decision.
I'd like to see a job description, first of all. I think that, I, I know that you've listed some of the attributes that you're looking for. I would like to see a full job description first, and I'd like to hear some options, including a search firm.
So just to, I'm happy to put that together with the board. I mean, I am the employee of the board, and so this, in terms of like, search firm or no search firm, is really the decision I would be bringing to the board, not necessarily having the board weigh in on what all is in the job description or in the search process. So I'm, we can certainly, I think, run a search ourselves, well, not certainly, I think that we can run the search ourselves, and I think that we can do the research, and I think Lori has good networks in the larger HR community to get into those, and so we certainly can do that. And, and Barbara, I take your point about the, you know, when to ask staff for input, and we, we do ask for a lot of input. I do think that, you know, I talked with Lily about this, and they felt that it would be important to involve the staff in the process, but we can talk more about what that would look like. And, and so in terms of kind of what I'm asking, what to weigh in on is more yes or no on the search firm? And if, in order to do that, you want to have additional information, of course, I am happy to provide that. I want to make sure we don't blur lines too much in terms of...
One, I'm asking two things. First of all, for the position to be implemented, it's a new role, it's a new position. So I think that's one thing, and the other is how to get someone to fill that. I think at this point, I would gladly support the creation of that new position. So I don't know if you need an answer to that first, or if that's something the board does, or if that's your...
That has not been something that the board has done previously.
Let me just say, Kate, we've never been asked, at least during my terms, we've never been asked to say, okay, we're putting in a new position at a high level.
Yeah.
But I agree to the extent that, you know, in terms of historically, what has the board weighed in on budget and with respect to employment, the executive director. Below the executive director, we've looked to the executive director to handle that decision-making.
I would, I would say, Jay, correct me if I'm misspeaking, but our, our role would be to ensure that this institution can afford that position.
Right, that's why I said budget.
Over the long term.
Right, and not necessarily whether or not the position should exist.
So are you now saying that before going to the extent of trying to find a search firm, you would like to internally decide if you want to go ahead and go through the process yourself first, and then if it's not successful, come back with the search firm? Or are you saying that you want to go back to the drawing board, work on the search form, and do a presentation in January?
What I'm hearing is that the board is not, at this moment, unified behind the idea of a search firm.
I think that's fair.
Which is fine. And, and so I think that in order to move forward with this much-needed position, I think that the clearer route is to talk internally about how we can execute the search, recognizing that there are benefits to having an outside firm, that maybe we can talk about with Lily about how we can make sure that we are addressing any concerns that might arise because of that, and not bring anything to the board in January. Because I think that, my feeling is that if there was a unity across the board of like, let's, yeah, search firm, let's, let's do it, let's get some information, but I don't think going through a proposal process and bringing people in when the board isn't even sure if that's the route that we would want to go is a good use of our time, when we could be spending that time doing the research that we can do, and getting the word out, and posting the job, and, and getting, you know, letting staff know what the process will look like. So, that's kind of what I'm hearing, but if...
The beauty of a search is that you can always start it yourself, and if you find you're not being successful, then go the route of the search firm. You know, it's kind of like being a homeowner who puts it on the market with their own for-sale sign, and then decides to go and hire the agent. You test the water, see what you find, and if it's not full of applicants isn't what you're looking for, then you can go another route.
That sounds good.
So the next item on the agenda is the HVAC chiller update, but I want to table that until we go through the new business, because if I, so that we can do the new business and then go to closed session once we're done with the new business. So the new business is a discussion about the TK elevator passenger elevator modernization proposal. Anna, are you ready to present?
I am ready. So in the memo that I put together, I kind of talked about this project. Our current Dover DMC platform is being discontinued, and it needs to be upgraded. So I reached out to Product Architecture and asked if they could help us, help tell us what we need, and help me with the bid documents. And they informed me that TK Elevator, who purchased Dover and manufactures our elevators right now, is part of a group called Omnia Purchasing, which is a cooperative that governmental entities can be a part of, and so we don't have to go out to bid, and we can just have them come in and provide us with the quote. So that was what I did. They've done this for other libraries, and the process worked well. So that is what I am presenting to you. The facility, the elevator is part of the facility plan. That's why I was just looking to see what year it was, and it's, it's down here. The elevator, I have it in, roll up. I have it in fiscal year 2324, and I have it estimated at $200,000, so this is coming in under that. The project will not be complete in fiscal year 24. It, it would, we would order the materials in fiscal year 23, and the work will be done in like June of '24, because that's how long it just takes to get the materials and then schedule the work.
Can you do a little bit more to explain what is exactly that is being, or needs to be replaced, repaired, rest?
It's the, it's like the computer system for the, how the elevators operate, and the circuit boards are no longer being manufactured anymore. And so if they were to break, we would not be able to repair the elevators.
And we have two elevators, correct?
Yes.
And is this proposal for both elevators, one elevator?
Both elevators.
Both elevators.
And each elevator would take like five to seven days for this work to be done. So it'll be a total of 14 days. So we would take one elevator down, they would, they would work on that one, and everybody would use, let's say we take the patron elevator down first, and everybody would use the staff elevator, and then they'd flip it, and they'd take the staff elevator down, and everybody would use the patron elevator.
In, in kind of looking through the proposal, it makes mention of items not included?
Everything is included, that's just like standard verbiage, but I have emails from TK saying that, so that was like having an electrician on site, but all of that is included in their number.
Okay, so there aren't going to be extras not included?
They have assured me that there are not any extras.
I did notice they said things like, but this price might change, basically, these six things.
I've talked to them about that as well, because the, you know, the attorney and I have talked about that, and they said that that should not happen, as long as we can get this signed and, and get the ball rolling, because like, once we do that, then it's kind of, it stops.
And then, in terms of, so Kate and I were talking, we weren't kind of certain where it was in terms of facilities management, so this is really just moving up what was in the planning slight bit?
No, it was in this fiscal year.
I had originally told you that I thought it was two years out. I did not have the facility plan in front of me, so it is this year.
So it's in this fiscal year, and actually, it, the final piece of this work will be done next year.
And we have the funds sitting in the construction fund?
Correct, in the CIF fund. So there's no, you know, we don't have to worry about it, where the funds are coming from, yeah.
It's already been.
Yes.
Are there more questions for Kate?
For Anna.
I guess I have a quick comment, for what it's worth and the timing. I'm sort of familiar with having to do these retrofits and control boards going obsolete and having to modernize, so it is what it is from that standpoint. The other thing is just coincidentally, I was on a call today with about eight other companies through a consortium, and at least four or five of them were pointing out Omnia Partners as a really good company that helps to refine projects and get the best of what you can get. And people were praising that particular firm.
I mean, we have used the Omnia contracts for when we're buying furniture for certain projects, like, we kind of use that and like, you know, so I, we try to use it as much as we can on certain things. They, we've also used the contract for our uniform rentals, you know, there's, so that has helped there. So it is, it makes it very easy.
Yep, yep.
So thank you.
Yeah, we use them as well at my company.
Is there a motion to approve the TK elevator modernization proposal for $176,850?
So moved.
Thank you, Stacy. Second? Thank you, Barbara. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bobinger?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Inspector Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Junical?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. So is there a motion to go into closed session under the Illinois Statute 5, ILC S 122 C 11, for litigation? When an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Janet. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, can we have a roll call for the?
Mr. Bobinger?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Inspector Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Junical?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes, we will go into closed session. Okay, we're back at a closed session, into open session. Can we have a motion to approve an asset test by a local HVACR company of the chiller for a price not to exceed $15,000?
So moved.
Thank you, Stacy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Barbara. Can we please have a roll call?
Mr. Bobinger?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Inspector Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Junical?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. That was everything on the existing agenda for unfinished and new business. The remaining agenda item is the agenda building for January, with a reminder that there is no December meeting. In January, we will be having on the agenda the security camera policy, executive director evaluation process. This is picking up from when we dealt with it, to start discussing a new process with some structure, discussing the auditorium rental policy. It sounds like we will have a further update on the HVAC chiller status, and then I'm sure we're going to have some strategic plan updates.
Probably the day before the board retreat. Won't that be exciting? I know, two days before.
Okay. Is there anything else anyone would like to ask be added to the agenda at this time? Otherwise, you have to wait until your January email. Okay, that being said, I will declare the meeting adjourned at 9:15 PM.